Welcome, everybody. We'll call the meeting to order. Let the minutes reflect that all the members are present. And we'll begin with a moment of silence. And I'd ask that we remember Kennedy Seegers, who's a Decatur High School graduate from last year, class of 2018, who died very tragically, was hit by a drunken driver. So I want to have a moment of silence. Now if the members will rise, let's have a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, in its infinite public, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is the, well, the agenda, do we have any revisions to the agenda? And the second, approval of the minutes. We have minutes from the regular monthly meeting last month, October 9.
Ashaki, did those minutes get corrected from what we noticed earlier?
Yes, sir.
We also have minutes from the work session on November 5. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
No.
So the minutes will be accepted as presented. And next is the fun part, the spotlight.
Yes. Courtney, you want to come take it away?
This is one of my favorite nights of the year. So, tonight I have the honor of introducing an amazing group of teachers. Before I introduce them, I want to take a minute to tell you how our Teachers of the Year were selected. The school-level Teachers of the Year were nominated by their peers, and all nominees must be in at least their third year of employment with City Schools at Decatur. Nominations for school-level Teacher of the Year were required to include how the teacher demonstrates leadership within the school or system, works as a team member of the school, works well with staff in the school, parents, and administrators, provides evidence of student achievement and engagement by providing a stimulating classroom environment. Nominations for school-level Teacher of the Year are considered by a committee and selected by the principal. Now to introduce the teachers. So, teachers, when I have finished reading your introduction, please come forward to my right, this little alcove, to receive your plaque, flowers, and take a picture with Dr. Duty and Mr. Jones. After your picture, please move over back to the chairs and wait for the entire group to be introduced, and wait for the announcement of the CSD Teacher of the Year. Let's get started. First up, from College Heights Early Childhood Learning Center, Stacy LaBoucher, Inclusion Pre-K Teacher. Stacy has always loved working with children since her first job as a babysitter in middle school. Stacy has 15 years of teaching experience in early education, teaching pre-K, kindergarten, and first-grade students. Before she started teaching at College Heights, she taught in Bellingham, Washington, Asheville, North Carolina, and Grant Park in Atlanta. She says, "Since at College Heights, I've had the honor to be a teacher in the Head Start Inclusion Classroom, where I collaborate and team teach with a special education teacher. This experience has made me a better teacher and pushes me always to be thinking of ways to best support a diverse, wide range of learners." Stacy's colleagues say Stacy is a caring and dedicated pre-K teacher who fosters positive relationships through her knowledge of conscious discipline. She consistently sets high expectations for all students and has demonstrated her knowledge of the pre-K academic standards through the academic growth of the students. Stacy makes herself available to support struggling students and differentiates her instruction to meet the needs of individual students. She says, "There are so many things that I love about teaching, but I think my favorite is the age of the children I work with each day. I have a real passion and understanding of early childhood education. These years are critical, and I strive to make these first-school experiences for my students positive and impactful. The four- and five-year-olds that I engage with are full of wonder, with bright eyes and big smiles that greet me each day. The funny and sweet things that they say keep my days renewed and me coming back each year to a job that can often be overlooked and underappreciated." Her nomination said, "If you ever have a chance to come be a part of Stacy's classroom, do it. Stacy embodies everything that CSD stands for. She has created a warm, nurturing environment that is academically challenging. She believes in equal access for all students, as evidenced by her commitment to our Head Start partnership. Through her knowledge of developmentally appropriate practices, she is setting the foundation for children so they are ready to become a successful part of the CSD community. Stacy is teaching the students how to successfully navigate through life. She's teaching the children how to be empathetic learners, learners who can demonstrate a base 10 and discuss how to be a kind friend. Stacy is preparing these children for their journey throughout City Schools at Decatur. In addition to being a teacher, Stacy loves to watch her daughters, a seventh grader at Renfro and a freshman at Decatur High School, and Atlanta United play soccer. She enjoys hikes and bike rides, and she's always up to travel and is often daydreaming about the next place she will visit. Congratulations, Stacy."
Thank you.
Sorry. You deserve the recognition. Next up, we have Kelly Nichols from Claremont Elementary, Physical Education Teacher. This is Kelly's fifth year teaching in CSD at Claremont. Prior to coming to Decatur, she taught and coached in Gwinnett County schools for 12 years. She has taught all grade levels, including college, and she coached high school softball. Kelly says, "One of my favorite things about being at Claremont is its diversity. If someone were to randomly select five students from our school, it's likely those five would represent five different cultures, religions, learning styles, abilities, and family structures. The big takeaway for me as an educator is that our kids, regardless of their personal stories, are all capable of learning and growing. I love seeing them transfer the skills we work on to the classroom, the playground, outside of school, and so on. These life lessons will be with them long after they leave our school, and hopefully they'll be using them to shine as productive and kind citizens." Her nomination said, "Coach Nichols motivates and inspires students daily. Most mornings, there are students outside our office waiting for her to get there. These students help her set up for the day. Who does she choose for this big responsibility? Students who are struggling behaviorally or need a little extra motivation. She starts her day with these, some might say, difficult students in hopes of inspiring them to have a better day than they had yesterday." Kelly says, "I count myself lucky. I am one of the few adults in the building who gets to work with every single one of the 310 students at Claremont, and I do not take this responsibility lightly. Beginning the first week of each school year, I teach myself each child's name. I greet them every day, over and over, no matter where I see them, in class, in the lunchroom, at Community Circle. Once I've mastered all the names, I learn something about each student. Maybe it's that they have two older brothers, a cat named James, or their family speaks another language at home. I learn their hopes and dreams, their fears and dislikes, their family traditions, and favorite things. I have found that simply sitting down with a student and having a brief conversation can enlighten me on so many pertinent things. More than that, though, I can see the value they feel in having connected with a caring adult in the building. When a child feels safe, secure, and adored, they will achieve, not because I believe in them, but because they believe in themselves. Being a small part of helping a child believe in himself or herself is such an honor, and to me, it is the best part about being an educator." Outside of teaching, Kelly loves spending time with her wife and two daughters. She enjoys musical theater, traveling, all sports except for golf, trivia, Braves baseball, and her dog Max. Kelly could not be here tonight due to a family emergency. I would ask that everybody keep her and her family in our thoughts, and Claremont Principal Billy Heaton will come and accept the award for her. So congratulations, Kelly." You don't have to take a picture if you don't want it. Just come shake hands. All right, from Glenwood Elementary, Amelia Kopp, Early Intervention Teacher. For over 13 years, Amelia has educated children in kindergarten through third grade. She's been at City Schools at Decatur for 11 years, but began her teaching career in Atlanta Public Schools at Deerwood Academy as a kindergarten teacher. She has taught at Winona Park and Glenwood. Amelia says, "It is an incredible honor to work in City Schools at Decatur. We are a phenomenal school district because of our amazing teaching staff. I could not agree more. Every day, I am fortunate to work alongside dedicated, talented, smart, enthusiastic, and hard-working educators. Bettering myself as a professional drives me to continue learning and growing along with my peers and students. I passionately seek out the best ways to teach our students, and I believe teaching is what I was meant to do in life." Her nomination stated, "Amelia is such a positive force at Glenwood. She's always encouraging students, helping them see their strengths while challenging them to grow, be kind, and be thoughtful. Amelia is deeply devoted to giving her best to all of her students, all of the time. When asked her favorite thing about teaching, Amelia stated, 'Decatur has strong teachers who work on building relationships with their students, and I am grateful to learn from many of those educators daily. Students remember teachers the most that take the time to get to know them, and what I love most about teaching is getting to know each student and helping each one experience success in my classroom.'" Amelia believes in teaching units that teach positive character traits, give access to all, and provide relevance, and maintain high standards. She believes this is important because students need to learn about positive character traits in order to become better leaders. Likewise, all students need access to learning because it levels the playing field. In addition, providing relevance is crucial to engaging all learners. Even more so, teachers must hold high expectations. When teachers do this, students achieve great things. Outside of teaching, she spends time with her two boys, Bennett and Baxter, and her husband Charlie, and she loves to recharge by laughing with friends, and she's a deacon at Oakhurst Presbyterian. Congratulations, Amelia." Next up, Melissa Henderson, Oakhurst Elementary, first-grade teacher. Melissa began her teaching career in Jacksonville, Florida, after graduating from the University of North Florida. She's been a classroom teacher for 13 years, and this is her sixth year in City Schools at Decatur. She's taught second and third grade, and now teaches first grade at Oakhurst. Outside of teaching, Melissa says, "I am married to my best friend, Henry, and we enjoy traveling, trying new restaurants, and spending time with family and friends." When asked what her favorite thing about teaching is, Melissa said, "What makes teaching a very rewarding, yet challenging profession is the importance of realizing that providing educational knowledge is only one component to helping children succeed. In order to help children grow academically, they have to feel valued, loved, and accepted, regardless of their race, gender, ability, and socioeconomic background. At Decatur, the majority of our children enter the classroom with a wealth of prior knowledge, learning opportunities, and strong vocabularies. What I enjoy most about teaching is embracing the students who do not have those same opportunities and making them feel like an integral part of the classroom community. Creating a classroom environment that focuses on kindness, diversity, and inclusion allows children to grow in all areas. Educators have to be willing to embrace the differences of all their students and provide each student with the support and resources they need to be their best little self." Melissa is a positive force at Oakhurst Community. This is clear in what her colleagues have to say about her. Ms. Henderson encourages her students to take risks, to learn by meeting challenges, and to be able to communicate and solve problems. Melissa believes that each student deserves to grow and learn in an environment that is safe and supportive. She puts procedures in place that allow students to take ownership of their learning, advocate for themselves, and take care of each other's hearts. Each teacher here tonight was asked to write about a unit or a lesson that defines them as a teacher. Melissa's lesson truly speaks to the part of our vision statement about making the world a better place. She said, "The first-grade fall expedition titled, 'What Can One Little Person Do?' is an expedition that teaches students the importance of diversity and inclusion. Throughout the expedition, students are given multiple opportunities to celebrate how our differences make us stronger. All students are involved in brainstorming and researching changes that can be made in their local community. Every student deserves to live in a community where they feel valued and accepted. By empowering students to use their voices to help implement changes in their city, students understand that every little person can indeed make a difference." Congratulations, Melissa. From Westchester Elementary, Latonya Henry, Physical Education Teacher. For Latonya, the journey to Westchester Elementary began in 1986 outside of Evergreen, Alabama. Down a long dirt road, every Sunday, you would find a five-year-old little girl sitting on top of a basketball. She watched intently as others played the sport she grew to love. She says, "Through basketball, I gained a passion for sports and building relationships and making an impact on those I encountered. Through basketball, I discovered people who believed in my journey. Fast forward 20 years, and the journey that started on the basketball court entered a new chapter. I defied the odds and became the first person in my family to graduate from college, obtaining a psychology degree from Kennesaw State University. She joined the Westchester Wolf Pack in 2014, where she says she has thrived as a teacher and has truly understood her purpose in life. She says, 'Teaching physical education has afforded me the opportunity to embrace my journey so that I may encourage our students to strive for greatness while understanding that their journey is enough and they are worthy.'" Why Latonya was selected as Westchester's Teacher of the Year can be summed up by her colleagues. They said, "Coach Henry is synonymous with the words inspire, achieve, and best. Her PE classes are not just fun and games, they are capacity-expanding experiences in perseverance, character-building, and discipline. Every single student in the school loves PE because her 'you can do' attitude is rousing to every student on every physical and mental level. In addition, she is not just a presence in the gym or on the field. She's often called to mentor students intervening at teachers' requests to help students who would benefit from her gentle, yet firm, expectations. Every student at Westchester is lucky to be able to experience the magic that is Coach." Latonya says, "A physical education teacher is the Swiss Army knife of any school organization." I love that statement. "And I, Ms. Coach Henry, love the opportunity to embark on a day of unknown duties. I have played the role of counselor, nurse, snake wrangler, personal trainer, community circle flash mob leader, and staff comedian, but my favorite thing about teaching is having the ability to touch lies and impact the future. Teaching is my canvas, but the thrill of making an impact is what drives me to create a purposeful masterpiece. She is thankful for the people that have and continue to encourage her and is grateful for her wife, Jessica." Congratulations, Latonya. From Winona Park, Kate Woodbridge, third-grade teacher. Kate is in her 11th year of teaching and her sixth year with City Schools at Decatur. She's taught in Athens, Clark, and Gwinnett Counties with the majority of the year spent in third grade. As her colleagues say, Kate is constantly learning and is always the first to brainstorm or research ideas for how to fix a problem. She is a National Writing Project Red Clay Teacher Consultant, ESOL, and gifted and endorsed teacher with a master's degree in early childhood education. And if that is not enough, she is currently in Georgia State University's PhD program in early childhood and elementary education with a science concentration. She says, "My research interests surround preparing pre-service teachers for teaching science in urban settings. I sought out the program in response to desire to join the research community upon which I have relied to make sound decisions in my classroom since the beginning, not just because my team calls me sciency, which is a nickname I wear proudly." Kate's nomination said, "The students in Kate's class are always excited and interested in what they are learning. Kate goes out of her way to find, coordinate, and plan the best part of the work we do. She finds experts to come into our classrooms. She plans projects and experiments. She tries to find ways to make everything she teaches fun and interesting so all of her students can feel successful and motivated. Her passion for science, art, and writing shows her kids what motivation looks like, and they are all better off because of it." When asked her favorite thing about teaching, Kate said, "Teaching makes me feel part of a plethora of diverse communities in ways only a classroom can. It allows me to learn about the world by extending the school walls and celebrating the unique cultures that intermingle within them. I get to share in my students' customs, traditions, hear their stories, their family stories, and help build community among many walks of life. We share news, good and bad, opinions agreed upon and not, hopes and dreams, failure and success." Another colleague said, "Kate lives by example by modeling everything with her students, not only in the classroom, but everywhere. She has high expectations for her students and expects their individual and personal best. Outside of Winona Park, she is Aunt Kate, child number five, nail art queen, fascinated with that, horror buff, and crocheting cat lover, and she's lucky enough to be encouraged every day by her husband. Congratulations, Kate." From the 405 Academy at Fifth Avenue, Michael Holiday, fourth-grade teacher. This is Michael's seventh year as an educator and his fourth teaching at Fabe. For the first three years of his teaching career, he taught fourth grade at the Main Street Academy in College Park, where he dedicated his time towards teacher development and the needs of his students. He has strived to narrow the achievement gap faced by his students by supplying them with a passion for learning, a sense of community, and rigorous expectations. He consistently pushes himself to hone his skills and raise the bar for himself and his students each year. At the beginning of every year, Michael shares a quote from Eldridge Cleaver with his class. Says, "There is no more neutrality in the world. You either have to be part of the solution or you're going to be part of the problem." He says, "As a young person, it can be difficult to know how to be an agent for positive change. However, when we can come together as a classroom community and strive for positivity, great things happen. Too often, teachers enter the classroom with preconceived notions of how the school year shall unfold. Yes, it is important to scaffold and plan your academic release of skills and information, but we cannot anticipate the most important element of our forthcoming year: our students. In order to achieve honest and meaningful connections, we must build open and honest relationships with our children. I aim to learn my students' backgrounds, their hopes, their fears, their motivations, to tear down the blinders of my biases about their nine- and 10-year-old lives. To achieve this feat, I embed morning check-ins, outside extracurricular cheerleading, and general kindness into my craft. Building relationships is, hands down, my favorite part of teaching." At Fabe, Mr. Holiday's passions include developing new teachers and building relationships with his students in the hopes they become self-motivated learners. He says, "Every student should know that they matter and that they deserve to be able to work towards whatever it is they love." Michael's nomination spoke about his passion for developing new teachers and the importance of this relationship. His colleague said, "Fabe guarantees each grade an exceptionally helpful and nurturing mentor, but Mr. Holiday saw that I needed additional support. He was the person that first walked me to my room. He was the person that sent me his weekly parent communication. He was the person that walked me through my first-term plans. He was the person that said to me on day six of working in Decatur, 'Listen, we got you. You're not going to fail. Your children are not going to fail. Mr. Holiday is the positive role model that I needed in this journey as a new teacher in CSD. His guidance will foster both my students and my own growth.'" On a more personal note, he says he's a long-depressed Braves fan, an ex-punk rocker who still writes tunes in his spare time, and that Catherine, his amazing wife, supports him in all his endeavors, both professional and personal, and probably is the best thing that ever happened to him. Congratulations, Michael. From Renfro Middle School, Johnny Stroy, sixth-grade math teacher. Johnny has been a teacher for 13 years, beginning his teaching career at Parkway Middle School of the Arts in Fort Lauderdale, Florida. Johnny is a creative teacher with high expectations. In his class, you're going to learn math along with real-world applications. For example, Mr. Stroy spoke in his application about a lesson on percentages delivered using the concept of gentrification. He gave the class several monopoly board games, divided the class into two, and then assigned four pair groups to each board game. Each pair was assigned a letter, which came with a specific dollar amount and a set of rules to play the game with. He says, "In a standard monopoly game, everyone begins with the same amount of money, plays by the same rules, and all have the same goal of bankrupting the other competitors. However, the real world does not function in that manner. Everyone begins their life at vastly different stations with different amounts of resources, and unfortunately, because of the structure of society, operate by different rules as well. This lesson, he says, is about societal inequity and how people have to become very creative based on their position to propel themselves forward. It involves practical application of mathematics as well as critical thinking, anticipating what other players in the game may do, creativity, and can instill a sense of justice in students when they understand the effect of the rules, laws, and the cash amounts, resources, given to each team. It often leaves the very thought-provoking discussions after the game when debriefing on the experience and what was learned." His colleagues speak highly of his creativity in class. They say Mr. Stroy consistently has new and inviting curriculum for each and every student. He is a fantastic teacher who connects with the students and creates insightful assignments that explain how and why to use a particular math problem. His class has a culture and vibe that only your best work is accepted. He holds every student to a high standard, and he gives students the tools they need to be their best selves. Johnny says the greatest thing for a teacher is when paths cross with a former student, sometimes as adults in college or a place of employment, and they share the impact that was made on their life. All the while, thoughts such as, "I did all that? I just wanted them to learn the order of operations," or "to learn how to work with others," or some other daily lesson that must be covered within the 180-day school year. "It is the ultimate validation for what we do. It is very humbling and serves as a reminder that we just never know how we are impacting the lives of students long after they are no longer on our roster." Congratulations, Johnny. And from Decatur High School, Jennifer Gonzalez, 10 through 12 IB Theory of Knowledge, AP Psychology, and co-taught US History teacher. Jennifer began teaching in 1993 after getting her degree from Emory. Before coming to DHS, she taught in Gwinnett County, Fayette County, Georgia State, and the Howard School. She started teaching at DHS in 2007 after taking time off after her children were born and getting her master's in history. When asked her favorite thing about teaching, Jennifer replied, "I teach people with the hope of making them better people. I want them to see themselves as people I want them to see themselves as people who can take on a challenge, cut through the obstacles, and stretch to be the best of their personal ability. I teach people, and these young people teach me. They have taught me to challenge myself and my own preconceptions. They have taught me how to find joy in a single smile from a very grouchy kid. They have shown me how they can complete the challenges of a day while withstanding issues with family, police, violence, anxiety, hunger, and abuse. They inspire me to find ways to celebrate, and I am thankful for each opportunity." Jennifer's impact on the students at Decatur High School is beautifully described in her nomination written by a colleague. He said, "Jennifer is more committed to working with students who otherwise may not be adequately served than any other teacher I've ever worked with. She differentiates lessons for students to make sure they are kinesthetically learning in authentic, meaningful ways that make them look forward to class. They work on and build lifelong communication skills in new ways daily." He says she actively ensures that there are diverse examples and perspectives being represented in her class. She purposely thinks every day about how to make sure all of her students are represented equitably in her examples and discussions, and students have noticed and thanked her for this. Jennifer also works very hard to be involved in DHS activities and often is a sponsor. She says, "When I'm not in the classroom, I like to promote spaces where a diverse group of young people can explore their talents. I love live music, and I sponsor Rock and Roll Review because some of the finest moments at Decatur have been when I get to see kids revealing their true selves on stage." "I also feel passionately about promoting equity and cultural diversity in our community. I sponsor Close Up, and I try to make sure that all students have access to experiences, inquiring, exploring, and fighting for justice within the American system. I further this work as a member of the Beacon Hill Black Alliance for Human Rights." Congratulations, Jennifer. Can we give all of our teachers another round of applause? This is a tremendous group of people we have sitting in front of us and an amazing example of the teachers we have in this school district. Each one of them care deeply about their students, and each one of them truly live up to our vision of building a foundation for all children to be their best so they can achieve their dreams and make the world a better place. Now, Dr. Didi, board members, audience members, before I announce the 2018-19 Teacher of the Year, I'd like to say thank you to a couple people. First, to DEF for sponsoring the awards tonight and for always supporting our teachers.
Hi, good evening. Good evening. It is my pleasure to be here, and congratulations to all of you, most of who, most of you I know or have gotten to meet or work with, but you represent an amazing group out of an amazing group, so that's even more spectacular. I have the privilege tonight of representing the entire Decatur community, and we are here to just, on behalf of the parents, the donors, the community members, the businesses, to say thank you for all that you do every day, all day, ceaselessly, tirelessly for our kids. We spend December at DEF raising money to support our great school system, the great leadership, and of course, the classroom teachers, but we spend November before we ask everyone for money, reveling in the gratitude that we feel. This is hard, I feel like talking to y'all, but I'm facing this way. And so much of the gratitude and so many of the gifts that we receive from the community, from five-dollar donations that are so meaningful for someone who is inspired by your work, to much, to just big donations for specific causes, so much of that is inspired by what you do for our kids. And we just, we can't thank you enough tonight. I just have the pleasure of giving you a small token of gratitude. We hope you do something frivolous with it and spend it on yourselves, and don't use it to pay off your bills or buy school supplies. Do something nice for yourselves, and please know on your hard days, the community stands with you and behind you, and I hope you feel the love. Congratulations. For such a great job done. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Gail, and thank you, DEF. I would also like to thank the District Teacher of the Year Selection Committee. They had a hard job, and they took this very serious, and when I say a hard job, it was very hard to select just one. So now, as you've heard from their own words and the words from their nominations from colleagues, our Teachers of the Year are an outstanding and dedicated group of teachers. But now it's time to announce the System Teacher of the Year. As a CSD Teacher of the Year, our representative will go on to compete in the state Teacher of the Year selection process. The teacher selected will also receive $1,000 toward a professional learning of their choice. So, now, everybody looking at this big, beautiful screen here to find out who our 2018-19 Teacher of the Year is. Michael Holliday. Thank you, everyone, for sitting and listening to this. I know it's long, but these teachers deserve every minute of recognition that we can give them. So before y'all get out of here, can we take a group picture over here with the board? Okay, thank you. Or stay. Stay, stay!
Particularly worthwhile for Abby to stick around as her teacher. Oh, yeah? The kids can see it, too. Like, I wish, I wish more students would sort of root their teachers on. They have so much to point out.
It seems like it'd be nice to do it in a place where... What other kind of thing could you recognize that you could have bigger, similar, more students in? Like, don't you do that, don't you do that? You're doing a second one, aren't you?
It's like the Untouchable Group. I thought I could sneak.
We're not untouchable? No, we need to, we need to lower. Good to see you, Brooke.
I told you how awesome it has been since, probably every chance I see it.
How are you doing?
I'm good. How are you doing?
I'm just, it's a busy time of year already, and it's not even the busy time of year, you know?
Oh, right, that's right. I took the girls, Greg was out of town this past weekend, so I was trying to do some fun things. I took them to one of the escape rooms, whoever it is that you've taken Abby before. So we did the Al Capone Room, which was, I guess, the last one that she had. She did, because Wyson did her birthday parade there, and then you took, so she did two of y'all, is that right? Am I thinking of that right?
Yes, yes, because she did the Egyptian one last week, so she's gotta be good at this now.
Well, it was the Al Capone Room was, I think, a little more, um, as from the history. I mean, it's up to, yeah, I mean, I would just begin, it's just like, I would just, maybe I'll just do three minutes. Just do it, and then no one can criticize you if you give five minutes if there's 10 people, or just a three. It was harder, and we were not able to solve it.
We blew up in that one.
Oh, did you? Yeah. We did as well, and Abby was so frustrated afterward. She was like,
Are we ready?
I have to tell Wyson that this one just didn't work out.
It didn't for us. Tell her it's okay. It didn't for us either. We almost got it, but we didn't quite get it, and Greta keeps saying, "We solved it, we just didn't get out." I don't think we all blew up. I'm like, "We blew up."
I'm not very good at that kind of stuff to start, but...
That one, I think, is kind of hard. We had to ask for a lot of clues.
Yeah.
Now we're just more liberal about asking for more clues sooner.
Yeah, instead of waiting. That's a good, that's a good strategy.
Okay, move it along. Wait, let's make sure we get out of here so all the kids are happy. Yeah, we blew up.
The kids love that stuff, though. They work on their own, designing their own.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is public comment, and we have two speakers, Mr. Keating, or Dr. Keating, excuse me, and Ms. Tesz, Tesz of Michael. Did I do it right? Dr. Tesz of Michael. Awesome. So we'll do, we'll do three minutes apiece.
I was gonna quote from John Ciardi, the former living translator of Dante, because it's the only thing I could think of. He said, "When I was teaching my first year, in this statement is ingratitude to our teachers, 'The reason why angels can fly is they take themselves lightly,' and I think teachers need, in these days of stress, to also give that some thought." Some quick comments. I wanted to comment about civics, and late Justice O'Connor used to talk about it. "We might start with the flag. We're having difficulty in the city and the community knowing when to put the flag up and down. I hope that we will take some review to address that issue." "We had a board policy one time to put this in the library. I hope as we're making changes that it, one would still remain over there every month." "I know the state law requires a quick summary out in our marquee, and I think the narrative is good, but the summary would be even better, I think, sometimes." "I'm disappointed in our board webpage. One of our members is missing the biography, and for some reason, we can't reach you individually. We've kind of become groupthink with one email. I don't think that's as good as we should be." "There's a lot going on, I notice, with the board and policy manual. I hope that you'll review 3.5 I-1, which was that per diem thing, the 15 minutes before and after meetings. That was put in the charter when I chaired that committee. It was a childish thing put in by the city commission when they still had the belief they should keep a hammer over your head, as they put it." "So I would hope that we wouldn't do that. I hope the term 'public input' would get rid of the limp language from technology and that jargon. Public comment is, input is just so dull. And I do hope if RFP 19B001 goes along that maybe you'll invite some of the old geezers to talk about the effect of the taxes." "Let me make one last comment, a personal approach I'm gonna take to presidential politics. I'm not going to pay any attention till August of 2020. Not going through 16 candidates and all the gibberish that we've done to upset our nation. And I would offer that we would do better with a young vote, though we had some this time, we had some 2008, if we would teach civics differently or government differently. Start with the ripple that's around the rock that affects students and these good teachers. That's y'all. School Board is the special-purpose government. It should be taught first, then the city, then the county, then the state, then the national, and then we can send a kid down to be Libya at Georgia Tech. I don't think the students understand anything about government because they haven't been taught the government that decides what time they have to go to school or how much time they have in a public forum. Thank you."
Ms. Tesz of Michael. Dr., or Dr. Tesz of Michael, sorry.
I'm glad there's a timer. I think I saw Greg Wyson in here earlier. Did anybody else? That's perfect. So he sent me an email this morning saying he was sick for a meeting that we had at 10:00 a.m. or whatever. I think it might have been 11:00. Just let the record show that people saw him here tonight, so that wasn't what I came to talk about, but I'm pretty upset about that. So I have what I believe, board members and parents, a grave issue to discuss at the broadest level. It's a matter of discerning and defining the rules of engagement and just really protecting the right to exercise respectful free speech as parents without attempted censorship from an individual or a group. Trying to go fast here. Since this is something that can fall in the gray, I have a recent use case to illustrate where I found there may be rather antiquated views about how social media does and should play a role in that. So I'm gonna go through seven touchpoints with Renfro School. I won't name administrators, but I'm sure hopefully someone will follow up. Number one, August 27th, a Renfro teacher sends a mass email to multiple students, to multiple parents admonishing students about a recent substitute day. Substitute teacher penalized certain students by taking their exams early instead of letting them finish on their own. Two, August 27th, I follow up with both my child and the teacher, asked if kid needs to be moved or sitting, if she's sitting near too many friends. Result, issue identified. She sneezed dramatically. Reassured by this teacher that all will be well and there shouldn't be future issues, but she'll let me know if this reoccurs. September 20th, I contact the teacher concerned that this single grade from a substitute-administered exam remains the only grade in the gradebook. Result, conference held in October. Reassured more grades will be added. October 12th, observed no change to grades in the course. Other instructors on the team are actively submitting formative and summative grades. And I love strong teachers. We had Dr. Stroy, loved him. But unfortunately, there's just been no touchpoints in this particular case. So looking at all the other instructors who have added grades, and in the past, we're used to seeing them add grades, I escalate to school administrator number one on October 12th, and again to school administrator number two, who by the way, just walked out. We'll identify him on October 23rd. Result, reassured by admin number one on October 24th, more grades will be added soon. October 23rd, I'm sorry, October 31st, no change in grade for the course, still one grade in the gradebook. Okay? Email admin number one twice. Result, reassured more grades will be added shortly. Students have progressed, and these grades are better. Thursday, November 1st, one day before end of term, and many days after was expected, a single grade is then added. So now there's two. There is no time to reflect or improve. Very disappointing, and this was at 9:54 p.m. on Thursday night. Friday, November 2nd, realizing the impact of a Great Schools review or a widely visible Google review, I first reached out to parents on Facebook group, which then resulted in me reaching out to about three different Facebook groups, because now I'm frustrated. With the statement, "Have concerns, questions about teacher name, we'll just say seventh-grade English instructor, Green Team at Renfro. Doing diligence to understand what other parents have encountered. Feel free to share via comment or send a message." I won't read all the statements that I got from parents. There's quite a number of them that had some encounters with this teacher. I even got some feedback from other teachers. I'm very frustrated, and I need for someone to do something. I've escalated, and now I'm here. Thank you very much.
Dr. Tesz of Michael, Dr. Furman here is our executive director of school. She supervises all the principals. She'll be reaching out to you so that she can talk with you a little bit more about that.
Next on the agenda is the superintendent's comment.
I don't have any comments tonight other than to say how exciting it is to have that Teacher of the Year ceremony. That's my fourth one, and I think we heard it from DEF, too. Like, what's amazing is that you can do that ceremony year after year after year and come up with new teachers that are all amazing, and how difficult it is even to choose that group, let alone the System Teacher of the Year, because we have such amazing teachers, and we're just really blessed to have those folks here, so I'll leave it at that.
So the chair's report. I have only a few items. Congratulations again to our Teachers of the Year and everybody who is here to support them. We also wanted to congratulate our REACH Scholars. Renfro Middle School students Dylan Elder, Gabriel Smith, Jada Chester, and Jaden Coore, I think I pronounced that right, were all chosen for the REACH Scholarship Program that's realizing that educational achievement can happen. This program helps eighth-grade scholars like the ones at Renfro prepare for college. When Dylan, Gabriel, Jada, and Jaden are in 12th grade, they will be eligible for a $10,000 scholarship to attend college in Georgia. We also want to congratulate Westchester on its expeditionary learning, oh, pardon me, on its EL education credentialing. So the school's been named by EL Education as one of seven newly credentialed schools in the United States. The EL credential recognizes the attainment of mastery in academics, character, and high-quality work through a rigorous, multi-step, multi-year process. So that's a great accomplishment. There you go. I was looking for Michelle. And finally, we'd like to recognize or congratulate Glenwood Elementary, who are our Walk and Roll winners. So this year winner of the Golden Shoe Award for International Walk and Roll to School Day. Glenwood had 85% of the student population participating on International Walk and Roll to School Day, which is a great accomplishment, so congratulations. And that's all I have.
I'll mention, too, I just thought of another one because I had the good fortune of being there when Westchester got recognized at the EL National Conference. And also, Marcia Bryant Fowler was nominated for a National Leadership Award through EL, and she was one of only 10 people nominated, so that's really awesome as well.
So next, next on our agenda. Excuse me. We have the consent items. We have the personnel report, school nutrition report, financial reports, the RFQB 18-16 for kitchen equipment. Do we have a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So the consent items are all approved. Next, we have an informational report from the, oh, on the College and Career Rating Performance Index.
All right, Dr. Furman?
Good evening, Chairman Jones, Board Members, Superintendent. Thank you for allowing me to give you a brief overview of our CCRPI scores, which is the College and Career Readiness Indicators set by the State of Georgia for the 2017-18 school year. Just to give you an overview, what I'm going to talk you through is, first, I'm going to talk you through a crosswalk between the new CCRPI scores and the old CCRPI scores. The state did a very large retooling and restructuring of that index score, so I'm going to walk you through what those changes are. Then we'll review district and school scores and then I'll talk about some of our initial thoughts on next steps on what to do with this information. First, as always, I'd like to highlight our equity lens for the City Schools of Decatur. This highlights a lot of the work that will need to be done and continue to be focused on for curriculum and instruction part of this lens. Sharing a quote, that not everything that counts can be counted and not everything that can be counted counts. And I think that's telling as we talk about CCRPI, especially in a district where we have such successful teachers. We know that a lot of our successes don't show up in the numbers. The CCRPI can shed light on things that need improvement. It can highlight some successes, but it's not a very easily used document and it's very complicated how it's configured. It's more, it's better for it to be looked at and used with schools that are in the traditional K5, 6, 8, 9, 12 configuration. So our K3 school is problematic as we calculate these scores at the state level and next year when we have K2, it's going to be even more problematic. So I'll highlight some of that. If you have any specific interest in learning more and more and more, I can walk you through even greater detail if you want to set up a one-on-one. I'm happy to do that. So first, I'm going to just give you an overview. The, the CCRPI is categorized into five components, which is content mastery, readiness, closing the gaps, progress, and graduation rate. And of note, graduation rate is only included in the high school CCRPI score. However, also to note is that the data that's used under the other four measures for middle school and elementary school, it's different data that's used and it's different weights that are also calculating how these are represented for those different areas. So the five total for high school, the other two, the other two levels, middle and elementary, only have four. Okay, so let's talk through this large amount of information. So I want to take a closer look at the sections. So for academic sections, and this is the, about over 50% of what calculates our overall CCRPI score, there are five components. First, content mastery. This is the overall percent of students scoring at the proficient or higher-than-proficient range on EOC or EOG assessments. Those assessments are given in 3rd through 9th, or 3rd through 10th grade and they are end-of-grade assessments in 3 through 8. And then in 9th and 10th grade, we give end-of-course assessments in the selected courses that have those assessments. The second component is progress and this is determined by student growth. And there's two academic areas used in this and they are math and language arts and those are the first two that we look at for growth. The state calculates what they call an SGP, a Student Growth Percentile. And it can only be calculated 4th through 8th for our growth because they have to use 3rd grade scores as the starting point. Then they use the growth score once they get to 4th grade. So up through 10th grade, we get SGP's. The third component for this measure is the access score. An access score is a test that's given to our English as second language students and it measures, measures their proficiency in speaking the English language over several areas, speaking, reading, writing, academic content, and listening. And the score that's used here is their growth band. So what they want to see every year is that our students are moving up in that band. The third component is closing gaps. This is an overall look at growth from year to year for every, for the grades that are also assessed on the milestones. And what the state is looking at is a 3% growth over from one year to the next year.
Is that a cohort growth or a grade, same grade?
I'll talk about that later. The third, the fourth component is readiness. This component looks at the percent of students in all grades from 3 through 9th with Lexile score. And in case you're not familiar, Lexile score is basically a reading level. It's an assessment that gives us a good idea about where, what level our students are reading on. And they set a standard score for what they want our students to achieve. If they've met that score, they get the, we get credit for them. If they don't, we don't get credit. This indicator for readiness also looks at student attendance. In middle school and elementary school, it includes as well as attendance and growth. It also looks at passing grades in fine arts, foreign language, PE, career, and health. At the high school level, it includes several more things of which include credit for AB, or A B, I B, dual enrollment, percent of students completing advanced academics, career and technical classes, fine arts, world language. It also pulls in the percent of students entering a Georgia college that do not need a remedial class in their freshman year. They determine that score by looking at our ACT and SAT scores. So there's a lot of components that go in there. The final one, graduation rate, that one is only, like I said, for high school and it looks at our four and five-year cohort graduations. Okay, so just to give you a quick preview of, of an initial change so you can kind of get a capture what's different between the previous two. Content mastery for elementary, middle, and high school is 30% or 30 points for the CCRPI. Previous years, it was 20 points, so it's gone up by 10 points. Progress is 35 and 35 in middle school and elementary. High school is at 30. It is 40 points now across the board. Closing the gap is 10 points, was 10 points. You can see the breakdown there, 15, 15, and 10. Readiness is also 15 points and it is broken down for 20, 20, and 15. And then the graduation rate is calculated at 15 points. So now I want to talk about a little more in depth about our question is what kind of data are we looking for in these? So if you look at this graph, you can kind of get an indicator that some places we're comparing apples to apples and some places we are not comparing apples to apples at all. So if you want to, let's take a deeper look into each of the areas for the old CCRPI and the new CCRPI. The state has clearly stated that you cannot do a comparison between the old and the new versions because of this drastic change in how scores are calculated. You can't really even say that this school is doing worse than last year because their score is lower. But what we can say is this score has a low, this school has a low score. We need to address that because that's not meeting our expectation for performance. So let's first talk about graduation rate. That one really is truly apples to apples. The same calculations, the same rate, the same weight. So that one pretty much stayed the same. Content mastery is also very similar to an apples-to-apples comparison because it is including the same assessments, the same rate is converted. So if our students scored 60% mastery, proficient or higher on the English Language Arts, we're getting 60%. However, because that weight is now 40 instead of 30, instead of having a regular-sized apple, now we have a jumbo-sized apple. So let's talk a little bit about progress. So we used to have a nice juicy, sweet, delicious red apple. Now we have kind of a sour, green apple. So what the state used to use to determine progress for, for this indicator was looking at students that scored typical or high growth on their assessment. So they looked at 4th grade students. They used 3rd grade scores as a benchmark. They said, okay, where did our students grow from 3rd to 4th grade? If they were in the typical or high range, we got points for those students. If they were in the low range, we didn't get anything. So for an example, if a student scored a test, scored a growth rate of 36, two years ago, we got a full point for that student because that was in the typical range. However, this year, the way they have broken it down, now we only get a half a point. So they've rearranged where we get scores for our students. However, on the other end, if the students score in the high range of assessment, we used to only get one point, now we get one and a half points. So if a student scored, let's say, a 66 growth percentile, before we only would get one, now we're getting a point and a half. So then now, let's take a look at the readiness indicator. Now here, we're still comparing fruit to fruit, but we are no longer comparing apples to apples. We're looking at apples to pears. So previous readiness score was determined by several factors, which included access score, the percent of students in, students with disabilities in the general ed setting, career lessons being completed, Lexile scores for just our 5th and 8th grade and 9th grade students. But the new readiness score is calculated using Lexile scores for every single student that takes the EOC or EOG assessment. So instead of just having three grades calculate, now we have 3rd through 10th grade. As well as, this readiness score also is used for students with Lexile scores. So every, oh, I already talked about that, sorry. In addition, the high school level, they have decreased the weight that was given to career and technical classes. So that has been lowered while the percent of students in your accelerated programs, they've increased the weight on that. So again, it's still kind of in the same genre, a little bit different. So finally, let's look at our closing the gap. Now this one is really totally different than it's ever been and that was one of our questions from Garrett. So let's look at this one and it's really not anywhere in the same ballpark as it ever has been in the past. So we are looking at apples to armadillos. It is that different. It is like, so previously, this closing gap was actually called the Achievement Gap Score. So they've even totally changed the name. The score was calculated by taking all of our CRCT scores, converting them into Z scores, then looking at our lowest 25% in individual schools, comparing that with the average for the state and creating a, a measure on how far we are away from that average for different subgroups. Now what they're calling closing the gap, they are using scores from 2016. And I'll give you an example of how this kind of sets, sets up so differently. And if you use those 2016 scores, if you score 3% better the next year in those subgroups, you've met your growth rate and you get a green flag. So to give you an example, let's talk about our 3rd grade students from 2016 when they set the baseline. So they set that baseline in 3rd grade. Our students that were taking that test are now 5th graders. That's their baseline. They say 3% above that score will be your growth score. So the students that are now 4th graders are the ones that have set up whether we met our growth score or not in the closing the gaps. So when you think about where we are with our students and those students may change, you think about teachers that may change from year to year. It is really such an odd comparison and it's not really about closing the gap. It's more about another growth measure from year to year. To give you even a broader look, CCRPI from 2012 to 2018. In 2012, they had content mastery set at 28%. I don't know if you remember this, but when they released the scores, they very quickly took them back and said, forget about it. We're actually going to adjust them again. They re-released them a couple of months later and they took content mastery all the way down to 24% and increased progress up to 25% from 15%. They retooled the CCRPI using the same instruments, but readjusted the content weights as well and took content mastery even down to 20% and took progress all the way up to 40. So you can see over time, it has changed. I think it's a little surprising that they put content mastery back up to a 30% because that's a pretty hefty lift for content mastery. Okay, so now let's dig into our own scores. I will say the state did a pretty good job on showing us, on making this accessible to the public. So when you pull up our overall score, it is 85 and that is kind of an average of all of our nine or eight schools. And you can scroll through this page and see just some general information about district demographics, percent free reduced lunch, our overall district performance. At the very bottom, you'll see a list of all of our schools. It'll show you the grade and cluster, their overall school score. And then it will also go through all the different parts of the CCRPI rating that make up that school's score. So I want to talk a little bit about mostly our elementary schools because you can see we have several that have an NA. When they have an NA, this part of the score is then redistributed to the other components. So let's take first a look at Claremont, just to give you an example. So when you get here, we're going to scroll down and we're going to look at content mastery. Basically, 79% of their students are proficient or higher on the EOC test, EOG test in 3rd grade. So let's look at progress because this one's quite different for our elementary schools. So if you remember, when I talked about progress, it was looking at growth in English Language Arts and math as well as ELL. So there is an NA for English Language Arts and Math because our 3rd graders don't have growth scores. Claremont does have a large group of English Language learners, so they will get a score in this area because of that assessment being given at their school. So Claremont's score of 69.1% is taken solely from our ESOL students and their achievement on the access test. So now let's go and look at a school like Oakhurst, who had an NA in that category. So if you look at progress, NA because they didn't have, they don't have growth scores for 3rd grade and they don't have any ELL students. So then these points that should have been used to calculate their score is redistributed. So that just helps you kind of see where they end up at this score as opposed to Claremont. And let's go back. The other thing I want to highlight is when you look at Claremont's score, closing the gap, it looks fairly low, but while our other elementaries are sitting at 100%. And I want to help you kind of see why it is that, that way. So when we look at our score, let's go to elementary. So let's look at our closing the gap. They have flags and like I said, these flags are kind of that apples-to-armadillo. It is the score that was set by 5th graders. How were they, that 3% growth, did that happen over time? So it's comparing a cohort from two years ago to our, the cohort, or one year behind the cohort. And when you look at these, they have English Language Arts. They don't have math or social studies because that's not tested in 3rd grade.
Science or social.
Science or social, thank you. And you'll also notice they have flags in four areas, for all students, for a black subgroup, white subgroup, and economically disadvantaged. And now let's go look at our comparison school. Let's look at Oakhurst and they've got a score of 98 overall. And their closing gap is 100, but let's look at why that is. Because they only have one subgroup. They don't have enough students in 3rd grade to create another subgroup. So what I would attest to is that the, the subgroup, that closing the gap score is probably quite similar in all of our schools, even though it artificially looks high on these indicators because of the subgroup's size. So next steps. The next step is, we have an admin council meeting after the break. I'm going to be walking the principals through a pretty detailed dig into their data, helping them come up with talking points, how they can share this with their community, also the information about the big changes from the previous year's CCRPI to this year's CCRPI. I think as a district, our next steps are really looking at how do we take this data and use it to work on a district improvement plan? And I believe that one of the most important things that we should do as a district is teach kids how to read. But only more important than teaching kids how to read is teaching kids how to read to learn. So we need to really focus in on literacy. Literacy, I think, is the key that will help our students grow exponentially throughout not just our measured years, but all of our years. And I think once our students learn how to read to learn, they're going to be able to grow exponentially in every single area, which leads to our second area of disproportionality. So we know that if you have the tools of reading and writing and communicating well, that you're going to be able to be more, more successful no matter where you are. So while this score highlights some of, some pretty discrepant, some pretty, you know, dire information, I think it also helps us see that we have a baseline and somewhere to focus on to look at growth over time. And the last thing I think is just obviously looking at content mastery being now 30% of the score. It's a huge component. And I think taking a deep dive into our classrooms and now we're seeing a rigor level in our classroom that's matching the standards. And if we do see those levels being matched, you know, matching, then we're going to see the assessment scores rise as well. Okay, thank you again for allowing me some time to share this information. If you have any general questions, I'd be happy to answer those at this time.
Who wants to go first?
Who wants to go first?
I thought I was getting off easy.
I can go, it's not a question so much as me beating my regular dead horse. Um, of why I don't like the CCRPI and similar tests is because.
About as many people in here can get in line.
You know, I, I think I recently asked, you know, had the scale scores of the cutoffs changed, and the answer was no. And so I felt, you know, that's just that momentary stability in this ever-changing system. And to hear that the way that points are being allocated has changed, the way that things are being weighted has changed. Um, the nuances of these, the things, the tiny little details in there. The fact that the state doesn't provide a way to translate scores from one sort of changes to another, to me makes this entirely useless. Um, maybe it's not entirely useless, maybe that's hyperbole, but, um. Uh, you know, I, I did my own little thing where I re-weighted the scores this year versus it last year. But given what you've said tonight, um, you can't really do that, so it doesn't make any sense. You know, to me, it's, it, also, the, the, the tests that are being used to assess the kids, did I understand you correctly? In the progress, they're, they're not comparing the same cohort of students and they're not comparing the same grade? They've done something halfway in between both, which probably accomplishes neither.
When you look in at the progress, they're assigning flags. So every, there's enough students for a subgroup, they get a green, a yellow, or a red flag. If they've met their three percent growth, but it's a non-matched cohort.
Three percent or three percentile?
Growth, not a three percentile, three percent.
And that's come from on one test to another test?
So it is looking at third grade tests. They set the baseline with, let's say, for example, third grade Language Arts. And then they say, okay, you need to, up, for your black students, you need to increase that score by three percent the next time students take third grade math. So those students that set the baseline are now in fourth grade. The students that take the baseline, that take that sus- test again next year are third graders. So they're not comparing a cohort, they're comparing just scores.
And that, again, one of my regular dead horses is, you know, are we comparing delivering the curriculum? Or are we comparing how we actually affect individual students? Um, the, the tests themselves are grade-level test. So if a student's far behind and is making great progress, they're marked a failure. If a student was way ahead and made no progress, they're marked success. So I, I appreciate this, and I'm, I'm sorry that you have to deal with this and the way that it changes from year to year. From the board perspective, when we're doing our end goals, I don't find this very useful.
We share your frustrations.
I'm just curious. Looking forward with our new configuration, do you think, it, it seems like it will be, make it impossible to have subgroups at most likely the elementary schools in the future?
Um, yeah, I think the subgroup sizes for, well, for K-two, since there is no milestone assessment in kindergarten, first or second grade. They will actually use third grade scores from our upper elementaries to assign a growth score and progress score for the lower elementaries. So it will be one year removed, the students won't even be in their building, and those scores will be coming back down to that school, those lower elementaries. So that's why it's even a, a more troublesome problem for when we have a reconfiguration to K-two. Um, now, school districts are like that. A Beaufort City has a K-one, um, lower elementary, and they have the same problem. They, those scores come down from the upper elementary to the lower elementary. I mean, it is, it is what it is, and we just have to figure out what to do with it.
And I would say it's only a problem if you care about what the CCRPI score is. I don't think we really need to, I think, we, we glean what valuable information we can from it. And do what, like, like Maggie said, she's gonna do a, a day to dig into it with the principals. Cause there are some nuggets in there that are worthwhile information that will help us, but the score as a, as itself is not very useful.
Okay, thank you.
What does turn on the score? Like, why do, why, why should we care from the state's perspective about the CCRPI?
Cause they put it together, I guess.
Are they, well, I'm trying to ask if there, are, are there any consequences?
Oh, no.
Oh, yeah, there are. Um, so if you are in, um, a targeted school, um, if you're in a low percent. So, we don't have scores as you look district statewide that are gonna put us in that overall percent. But what they are starting to do is look at your flags. And if your overall performance for a subgroup is significantly lower, they may start knocking at our door. So that is one area to pay attention to.
And do we know what that percent, that number is, where they start?
Well, we're pretty good, cause it's usually in the single digits. So, we've got some time, but we definitely make, wanna make sure we're keeping an eye on it.
Is this the score that, there was that proposal to do something in Georgia based on Louisiana? Where you label certain percent of schools as failing, and then you convert them into state-run schools?
I believe so, but I can convert in.
This is what they were going to use for that.
Okay, they could convert in but never back out.
It's like the Education Achievement Authority in Michigan.
And usually your s- low scores are, you know, most closely correlated with the, uh, economics. So you take away funds from schools that can't afford it.
Um, I echo my, my fellow board members' thoughts on sort of the uselessness of the scores. And I guess my dead horse that I'll continue to beat is, um, is just my concern for the kids who are, you know, performing below grade level but not qualifying for extra services. And I feel like we have a lot of students who fall into that gap. Where they're not failing, but they're pretty close, and they're not getting anything extra. And, um, I just, I kind of continue to ask that question, sort of, what are we doing for those kids? Who really should be on our radars, but they don't, we don't get any extra funding. And, and so it's, it's frustrating for those parents who are concerned about it and continue to ask questions about what are we doing for my child? Who's clearly performing below grade level. And the answer is, we don't, well, they don't really qualify for ser- for extra services. That's, that's the question I'm still struggling to get answers to.
I don't have anything to add except to compliment you for a very good, useful presentation, so, thank you.
You're welcome. I stole all my slides from someone else.
Okay, uh. Action items. Um, we have, and before us, the board policy manual. How, how, how do you wanna go about this?
So what I'd, I'd like to recommend that we table the vote, um, for tonight. Because there are some changes we'd still like to make. Um, and what I'm passing out to you right now is the most recent Redline version. Um, that would, um, correspond to the latest version that I shared over, over email, but in a Redline version, all in one document. Um, there were some things, as I went through the current board policies, that, um, I felt like were some holes we could plug easily enough. And there's no rush to get this approved tonight. So my recommendation would be that we table the, the manual. I'd like you to look through these changes, um, and there may be some others that you'd like to see as well. Um, and we can get this posted on the, of the board agenda, so folks can take a look at it. Um, and suspend our vote until, um, the December meeting. So that's my one recommendation. And then also, everywhere that an administrative regulation is referenced in this policy manual. The administrative team has been working very hard to create a draft of an administrative regulation. Um, and so those are all ready to go. And so what we would like to do is release those for public comment, um, tomorrow, or even tonight if we're able to do it. Um, and give folks, um, till probably December fourteenth to review those administrative regulations and give us feedback. Um, so that we can then, um, if the board approves whatever version of the manual, um, December thirteenth. We'll be ready to approve, um, administrative regulations very quickly after that. Um, and that way, we will have gone through our full process of, um, drafting amongst the administrative team, getting public comment. And having those reviewed and, and, uh, drafted. So, that's what my recommendation would be if the board is comfortable with that, or whatever other direction you'd like to go.
That's good with me, too. I wonder if we should, um, so this won't, this is, you know, we won't vote on this. I wonder if we should discuss the additions, at least the ones that you think.
So I was wondering about that. Um, so the additions that are in there are, for, either they're typographical errors that were just fixed, or they are language that came from other board policies. I guess my recommendation would be to give you some time to read through them. And maybe if you get comments to Louis or something, and then he and I can work on incorporating whatever your thoughts are. I hate to put people on the spot to read all of that in short notice. And we could still get it up there on the website then. I, I might suggest that. Cause there is, there are some big chunks, even though they came from other board policy, that I'm sure you'd like a chance to actually read through and consider.
That's fine with me.
How do you wish to receive comments? David, how, how do you wish to receive the comments?
I think Louis would like you to send them via Pony Express, is that right?
That would be good.
So send them to Louis.
Well, I mean, my preference is a, is, is an email, sending whatever out.
So if you all wanna do that, then he and I can touch base, like, in a week or so.
To be, an email or an individual document with Redline, that doesn't matter to me. What, what I get super frustrated with is the committee-written, um, group document project. So if it's a document and you wanna write down what you think it ought to be and just send it, that works, too.
Okay, we can just drop it off at, at your house.
Okay, so if there's not, if there's nothing that, I haven't looked at the new, new additions, and so I don't have any comment. If, if, if there's nothing to discuss, we can move on.
I'll move to table until the next regularly scheduled board meeting.
Do we have to vote on that?
Yes.
I think we do traditionally, I don't know.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so we'll take it up next month. Okay, the next item is a discussion on, or an update on Tally Street.
So this is the standing item that will be, you'll be seeing every month until Tally Street is open and going. Just it's an opportunity for us to update you on various things related to Tally Street. So, um, we have updates from Maggie, from Noel, and from Courtney, and I'm not sure, have you guys talked about who's going when? All right, first come, first served.
So just a quick update on the principal selection. We did first round interviews. We interviewed seven candidates. Uh, three internal and four external candidates. And, um, have selected our second round candidates, and they are interviewing tomorrow. So, um, hopefully, then, right after Thanksgiving break, we will have a final decision, um, on, uh, who we will select for principal. Once the principal's selected, I'm gonna, are you gonna talk about it, or no? Once we have the principal selected, then we're gonna start working on the staffing plan. So I think we've still got stuff in the works about that. Just so you know, that is up and coming, and that will be a big first part of what that new principal does, is select the staff for their school.
And just to be clear, some of the complexities are that we have to figure out, if you're moving third grade, do all the third grade teachers automatically move? Do people put in their name of, hey, I want to, or I don't want to, what school? It's rather complicated, and we wanna make sure to honor our staff and do it as, uh, above board and transparently as possible. So that's what we're working on right now, so.
How, how many new teachers have to be hired altogether?
We haven't, we don't know exactly yet. Ho- hopefully, it won't be too many. Um, but you do lose some efficiency anytime that you split grades. We're bringing together five third grades into two, so we'll gain some efficiency. But we're taking fourth and fifth grade from, from two schools into, or from one school into two, so we'll lose some efficiency there. So we don't know the exact number yet, but it should, it should kind of come out.
Ten, twenty, thirty?
I hesitate to say.
Okay, alright.
Courtney?
Um, mine's quick. I have a quick update on the naming. The form to submit the naming proposals closed on Friday, so we're in the process right now of going through all those proposals. And we plan to bring you, um, names to the, at the December meeting.
Good. How many submissions did you get?
Hundred and thirty-nine.
That's a lot.
How many different names did you get?
I don't think we've really looked at it, cause if they spell it differently or something, you know, like, it's hard to say.
I'll have it all broken out with a chart for you to see all of it at the next meeting, so you can.
You do a Wordle.
There you go.
I, I will tell you that Schoolie McSchoolface did make the list.
No?
She let out the secret.
I did.
Um, I'll, I will be as brief as possible, but if you have not driven by the school, please drive by the school. It's, um, it's pretty incredible. It's sort of sprouted out of the ground. Um, I will say that is not because of the rain. In spite of record rains, I believe we had fifteen days in June that was a, um, like fifty-year or something record. Um, we are still on target for opening in August, so, uh, commend our construction team. They have been working diligently to resequence and work on things to, um, get it where it needs to be. So, if you go by, you'll see, uh, the site work's been completed. You'll see, uh, the playfield kinda on this plateau that's been built up there. It's fantastic. Um, we have the parking lot that has been laid down with the binder, which is the first layer of the parking lot. So, it'll stay like that until we get to the final part, where I wanna tear up the nice new surface. So that'll come in at the very end, but basically, the parking lot is laid down. Um, steel's gone up. We've got the building divided into four quadrants. So D, C, B, uh, has gone up. A is going up. That is our last part, and that's the most, um, northern part of the school on the classroom side next to Tally Street. Reason being, we started with the kitchen, so we can get in there and hopefully April and May and start doing our kitchen stuff. Cause that's what really holds up projects, uh, is that area. Um, uh, plumbing has started. Uh, I just walked to one of the, uh, group bathrooms that we have down in the, in the common areas, uh, that we have. Looks great. Uh, wall studs are going up, so you can start to see the building taking shape on the inside. Uh, again, mostly in the sections DNC. And roofing materials are going on, so we'll start drying in in the next month or so. Uh, parts of it, uh, other parts, we still don't even have the roof up on the deck, so we'll get that in there. Um, we'll be working, uh, in December and January to program the play space. Um, the unfortunate part of the site is we lost a bunch of trees in the big storm that happened on June eleventh. The sort of lemonade of those lemons is that we opened up a fairly nice space inside of, uh, the tree preserve area. Um, to add to the play space. It's beautiful. And I'm hoping to, uh, schedule a time just after Thanksgiving, if I can get it dry enough out there for y'all to walk around. I walked the other day and it was up to my knees in mud, so, let's let it dry out a little bit. Um, you'll be, you'll be pleasantly surprised when you're up on the playfield area. It really feels like you're in the treetops. It's, it's pretty cool. It's, uh, you don't see a lot of buildings. You see a lot of tree and sky and natural stuff. And then you drop down into the tree preserve area, and it's very secluded, uh, within the site. It's really nice.
And we plan to invite, uh, city commissioners and the city manager to that visit as well, just so you know.
Um, we'll get you hard hats and all that stuff, too. Um, towards the spring, what you'll see, uh, coming is, uh, we'll have a, a plan to replant trees that were lost on the site. Um, redoing landscape, things like that. We've been working with our next-door neighbors, uh, who have been extremely gracious and, uh, impatient with our big bulldozers right next to their bedroom windows, uh, to come up with a real, uh, real nice-looking, uh, side yard there. And, um, the city has approved the transportation plan. So, uh, if you have not seen it, uh, the idea is to put a light coordinated at Tally Street and at Shadowmore. There'll be offset-coordinated lights there, um, similar to what's at Erie and I can't even think of the other street, uh, over by, uh, Claremont Elementary. They're a little closer, so you don't get that no man's land in there. But, uh, it's, it's a pretty good plan for us. It does not have any encroachment on our property, uh, which is great. So we were able to save that space, and they're also working on a plan for the sidewalk on South Columbia. So, I'll keep posted on that. Any questions?
It's exciting. It's looking good.
Yeah, it's, it looks.
Do drive by if you haven't been. It's pretty impressive when you see all that steel go up. It's, you can really get us the scale of the building. It's pretty neat.
I just have to say, ten years of constant growth, facilities, reorgs. Um, it's amazing that y'all are able to, to handle that, and I know how difficult that can be. Well, I don't know how difficult that can be.
There's a lot of moving pieces.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, um. Board work plan.
Nope, uh, property tax study.
Oh, yeah, I knew, I thought you were skipping something.
So, I've, uh, I've distributed a draft to everybody. Um, Heather and Garrett have put in a tremendous amount of work on this. Um, I do think, um, we've had a little discussion since we posted it of maybe changing some of the dates. Um, and so I think we just need to decide the, cause that intent to submit is pretty quick, given the Thanksgiving holiday. Um, so if we wanna bump that a week or two later, I can then redo all of the dates based on that. Um, the only reason you would not bump it is if we felt we were really under a head, hard deadline to have everything by like December seventh or, uh, have the approval at our December eleventh meeting. But we could rework it and then have it be approval at our January meeting, for instance. Um, so if you're comfortable with that, I do think you'll have a better chance of getting responses if we give a little bit more time for that initial intent to submit, to get submitted. Gives us a little more time if we know of any people who may be interested in the RFP to let them know about it and things like that. So, um, if you just let me know if you wanna. So if you just let me know if you wanna bump the dates and about how far, I can rework the schedule based off that. And then if there's any other comments about any content, we could certainly update that as well.
And where does this get posted?
So there's a state procurement website, and when you post it there, you attach a code to it as what type of work it is. And then folks who are watching for that kind of work get notified that, hey, this is out there, and so then they know, they usually, I assume they get an email or something, I don't know the exact metrics, but they then get notified that this is available and they may be interested. The other thing we do is if we know of vendors or organizations that might be interested, we can just write to them and say, hey, we wanna make sure you see this and here's a link to it, something like that.
And it seems like this RFP, maybe I'm wrong, but it seems kind of unique, like, there may not be that many vendors. Am I wrong on that? I don't, I mean, it's not like we're, it's not an RSP for a construction contractor.
Right, we'll, we'll probably get some proposals that will be kind of humorous, because it'll be people who really don't do this work but want to try to do it. But that's one of the reasons I think it would be helpful if we know of any groups that do this kind of work, to really reach out and say, hey, we, we really hope you'll look at this, you know. But yeah, you're right, this is a fairly unique one.
I agree with the approach of moving it out just a little, adding a couple weeks as opposed to rushing it for December. If it seems reasonable to do it for January, I would be more comfortable with that. I think it's worth giving a bigger window to get more quality participants, given how significant this is.
Is everybody okay with that? I agree.
Okay.
One comment, and it's something I noticed fairly late, so I apologize for bringing it up tonight. But in the provide recommendations section, we, you know, we explicitly mentioned tiered tax exemption options twice. And my concern is that by that being the only option that we explicitly mention, we may be leading our, you know, the applicants down a certain path, and I thought perhaps we might want to eliminate one or both of those, or rephrase those in some way, so that we're not, you know, saying, here's what. The other, the flip side of the argument is if we don't give an example, we might get something totally different. Happy to hear what other people think.
I'll give it some thought, I don't have an answer right away.
And we will have a couple days, it'd still be great to get it posted this week, but we have a couple days that we can tweak some of that language, too.
I, I just wanna thank the two of you, and I know, I know that Heather's been an awful lot into it, I think Garrett has too, and I, I appreciate, appreciate all the hard work, because it looks really good.
Absolutely.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So I'll just touch base with the two of you on the language you're talking about, and the, we'll get the dates set, and then we'll get it published. Everyone comfortable with that?
Okay, next, we are on to future dates, and this is the board work plan. I don't have any current thoughts on my head, do we have a work session scheduled for the next go-around?
Let me see. I'm not sure if we had one for November.
I think we-
I think because of Thanksgiving, well, we had the, we had the work session for November.
I know that one, one topic that we've, we've been intending to get to is what we used to call a grievance procedure.
Right.
It's called something else, but do we wanna, do we wanna do the, put that on the schedule for the next?
Yeah, so the next work session, it's, there's not one scheduled in December because of the break. So I'm just checking to see when the next one is. January twenty-ninth?
We also talked about, sorry, we'd also talked about restorative justice coming back in December.
So do you want me to try to find a date in December for a work session? Or do we want to have, because right now, this work session is scheduled for January twenty-ninth.
I see, I see, well, we don't want that. But do we wanna have a work session at some other date in December?
If we can find one that we can all do, it's very hard to do things between Thanksgiving and Christmas.
Yeah, I can circulate a doodle poll or something and we can try to find a date, if you'd like.
If we did one, which one would it be, and would the timing make sense?
I would think that we would not wanna do restorative justice yet.
We could certainly do the, the grievance or what's now called the complaint process, because we'll have that administrative regulation out for comment anyway. And it may be a good chance to talk through what it's saying and where the input came from for it and things like that, if you'd like.
Okay, and then put the restorative practices in January. And I would think, I don't know if there's a clearer sense of urgency for either one of these. If anyone feels that, like, assuming if, let's just say if we couldn't get the grievances in in December, I think I would be curious to know if, if we could still fix the restorative practices for January, seeing as we had intended to come back to that after the training.
Think about it, we, we will be working on student handbooks and stuff, not too much further into that. We may wanna do restorative practices in December.
Okay.
Don't you guys think, in order to have that? I'm just worried we're gonna miss, because they start submitting stuff for their handbooks and things pretty early. What do you guys think? Would January be okay? So maybe January for restorative practice, and December for employee complaints, does that work for you, David?
Tell me what you just said.
Okay, so, December, December for the employee complaint discussion, there formerly what we were calling grievances, and January for restorative practices will probably be most effective, it sounds like.
Okay, and then if, if the grievances doesn't happen in December, push it to February instead of bumping restorative practices out.
Correct.
Okay.
But I, I, I hope we can find a date in December.
Yeah, I hope so, too. I just wanted, I just felt like I didn't wanna let more of the year go by without revisiting that.
Correct, I agree. I'll send out a doodle poll to find a date for December. When we find a date, we'll talk about the grievance piece, the employee grievance complaint process. And then for the January session, we will plan to do restorative practices.
So, let's see, first question is, you have to bear with me and help me remember, there were two pieces to the, we were interested in two separate policies.
Yeah, so one's about grievance, one's about protection, and we can cover both of those in that work session.
Okay. And do we wanna, do we wanna talk here now? I mean, I haven't really given thought about what we expect from the work session, or do we wanna do that by email following the meeting?
I'm thinking maybe if we can sit down, we can put together an initial plan, and I'll circulate it, and then you can let us know if that looks like it's fitting what you wanna get out of it.
Okay.
If that's under, right, we'll try to kind of go with that theme we landed on last time of short presentations with discussion, short presentation, discussion, that kind of thing, we'll try to break it up.
I thought that worked well.
Does that sound okay?
So when David sends a thing, we all have to commit to respond to the question, and if you're good with it, just say so.
Or I'm gonna start texting you at one in the morning to say, you didn't respond.
And the, the second question with respect to restorative practices, I'm curious whether we're talking about, I mean, we talked about it a lot at the last work session. It had very little to do with restorative practices, consistent with it, but there's, it was, it was a more general theme about discipline. Restorative practices being a piece.
That's the piece that I'm talking about, like, we, we have a lot of work that we wanna start talking about, the student code of conduct, which you touched, started to touch on at the work session. So it probably is a little broader than just restorative practices.
So this is really discipline?
That'll be a piece of it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Okay. That's it, we have a need for-
We actually don't, I, nothing, normally, we have a legal or personnel item and we don't this time, so. Unless you guys know of one, but-
We did get the, the update from-
Yeah, I think you just need to review the update.
I'm good with that, unless the else isn't.
Knock on fake wood.
Okay.
Surprise. Happy Thanksgiving.
We're adjourned.